Yes.
Is it?
I am.
We'll sell it to you with discount.
I'll give you two for thirty-one thousand, I would say. I'm gonna be in that department. Yeah, that four and that, you know.
Shift keys.
Shift key, that kinda makes a difference.
That not a correct.
Tell us about, if you're looking for something to start with, tell us about the the landing.
That's what, that's number one on my list.
Okay.
Durham Landing. What do we want to do about that, guys?
The, the, the state rejects, it considers landing same as road drive street. So they won't, they will reject in the emergency catalog of, of street names. They reject landing and boulevard. They can't have that. Or every time we turn in a report, they flag it. So, we're gonna have to resolve that conflict.
Who is the state?
Uh, the state emergency communication is keeper of the addresses.
Okay.
Uh, the Durham, there's a Durham Drive off of Spencer Hale Road. It's a small little dead end road, I think there are two residents there. But according to your policy, Durham, regardless of the suffix, shouldn't, you shouldn't create two names, two streets with the same name. However, given the circumstances, my gut says that Durham Landing is a reasonable compromise, even though it doesn't comply to the letter of your policy. I think that's, that's what would make sense, given the conversations that have been had and the circumstances we find ourselves. But Larry, you're, you're closer to the keeper of the addresses than I am. Is that an accurate description of?
Yeah, it's pretty much right on target. So it's, um, going through the addresses, uh, when that ordinance was approved, both city and county, there've been other addresses we went and changed, rescinded names, and, uh, so it's, it's, you know, as Tony said, the two, if you will, the main name, uh, of Durham, uh, uh, that's considered duplication, even though one's Durham Drive and one's Durham Landing. The way it's looked at is, that's still Durham whichever way, so. But if, you know, since that's in the county, you know, council wants to keep it as is, that's fine. But as Tony said, the landing and the boulevard are considered, if you will, street types and by naming conventions, and, uh, and it'll, it'll be kicked out because we submit that information to the state on a routine basis. I forget if it's weekly or monthly, but it'll just get kicked out each time, so.
If you, if, Larry, if you kept it Durham Landing, is that flagged because of two by our policy, or is that flagged by nine-one-one? Are they, are they concerned about that?
Well, I would, I can't speak for nine-one-one, I would think so. And, and the thing is, and, and we ran out into this on David Crockett Walmart twenty-five, because if you have someone unfamiliar with the area and they're not able to communicate well, uh, sometimes GPS on cell phones work if they can triangulate. If they only can hit two towers, you can't triangulate, so you can't get location. And, and that's the concern, that if someone unfamiliar with the area, and they'll say, say we do Durham Landing and Durham Drive. I'm on Durham Road. Where's that? Okay, and that, that's the concern of having the same main name, uh, uh, for more than one street. But if, again, that's more our policy, what was, what we presented, what was passed by council, that unique names are for street addresses. Uh, so it's kind of two issues, if you will. The landing and boulevard is more of a state-driven thing, uh, so it's, however you folks wanna handle that. But, uh, you know, I kinda agree with Tony Durham Landing. I think if council so agrees that that will work, uh, it's our policy, so we can.
If we were sitting down with the developer and had this, this problem come up, usually what you do is consider a first name. So Shannon Green, for example, has got.
Eric.
Eric and.
Erica.
Erica, who, he's got his kids in eighth grade. Which does, it's not a very elegant solution, it doesn't really solve the problem very well.
Well, there, there is one other solution, but time might be a problem. And that is, if, if Durham Road only has two people who live on it, you could get with those two people, and if they agreed to change the name to whatever Smith Jones or whatever, that could be done, and then you could have Durham Landing Boulevard down there.
Yeah.
Is that a time problem?
No, and I think you can move forward with Durham Landing and, and, but that is a.
Hope that they'll, they're willing to do it.
Yes.
Didn't the county just go through this, though, on a change of address? Of course, change of address is a big, it's, it's a bigger deal than you.
It's impossible, but the only, well, I'm thinking is you only got two people.
Yeah.
That, that makes it pretty simple, if they're willing to.
I did look up on the, uh, property list, their names are Durham.
They're not Durums. Not, not Durham's or Durham's. So, uh, so that, that was my first fear, is that there's another branch of the family, we start in the family queue. Oh man, that's like directions, that's like old man Durham's bar in the turnpike.
It'll lead into the road.
But if y'all are comfortable with the idea of going forward with Durham Landing, I think, given council's action, we can interpret that, based on state's, like, so, reaction to the suffixes, if you will, and move forward without having to do another formal action. If you wanna do something beyond that, we probably oughta take it out there and go on.
Could we not do it as Durham Landing and later change it to Durham Landing Boulevard if we wanted to? If those people agree?
No, the, the boulevard is, landing and boulevard is a problem the state, we're not gonna overcome. That's the.
That's, that's naming convention is to keep, you know, it, it has, if you will, the main name and then the suffix, street types. Landing, street, boulevard, avenue.
Lane.
Lane, whatever.
It'd be like naming Durham Avenue Street.
Yeah.
So if my name was.
Right.
If my name was Lane, I couldn't have Lane Lane.
Especially if it's Kevin. Then you can't have it.
And I, and my guess is, uh, Tommy is that these, uh, of course, it's statewide naming conventions of way nine-one-one districts go across the nation.
True.
But, uh, yeah, it's, I think the Durham part, we can, we can make work, it's just, if we can just stay with landing or.
Or boulevard.
Either one, whichever.
I think what Tommy said, there's probably a good idea, if essentially no more involved in it than the two families.
That, well, really, the two residents are the easy ones, the tough one's the county commission. But it's to get it convinced.
Oh, that's right, that's not our street, it's county, it's county related. That's, that's another problem.
That's something we can request, for sure, and we can go from there.
Is that in the growth boundary plan area?
No.
No, it's way.
It's way.
Way out. So, so that's why, another reason, in this case, I don't, why it doesn't fit the ordinance is, I don't think the issue is there if we had not two Durums inside the city, which may be a little bit, you know.
It's a, yeah. I, I, we got bigger fish to fry than that, so I don't have a problem with it if nobody else does.
If we can resolve that, that would help Dr. Melling move forward with his paperwork, getting registered for the stuff he's gonna need for his office.
Yeah.
And I think that would be very beneficial for, for that aspect.
Tommy, is Chris Camp is, will be here next Tuesday at one-thirty?
Ten-ten at.
I think one-thirty.
I guess everybody gets emails, almost like I do. Is that okay?
I won't be here, I don't wanna be here.
We can Skype in if you'd like, you know.
We can.
I don't know where I'm at.
Yeah, if you invite the group, one's following.
You can come, you're on experience.
You weren't born yesterday, or.
But that, I bring the charcoal and the hamburger pants.
I know that charcoal's loud, Hilton Head.
Yeah.
But that is a Tuesday, that's a planning commission Tuesday. So what we would see is that we let the planning commission luncheon meeting get over with at one-thirty. It would need to be done in time for the four o'clock regular meeting, the planning commission. Gives us a good window in there, but then we're squeezing it into that.
Let's be upstairs and.
No, it's here in the training room.
Gary, you mentioned that there were a couple of entities that had come by to see you, really three groups that are interested. Do you think that you could, I mean, this is the time to have them, you ask if they could come together? And maybe they could have their united ideas by that time.
I, I, I had some thoughts on that, and just the current, they may wanna sit in on that. If it's, as a workshop, it's not a public discussion where Chris hears from different groups, why don't you do this or that? I've, uh, but I, I think making them aware of it would be probably appropriate.
Did you, I, I thought you mentioned that you wanted them to get, you suggested that they get together.
And, and they're working on that themselves. I, I'm not trying to direct or steer that. But I, I did, I did suggest that we have, we have another neighborhood roundtable come out in, in next month. I, I think they're planning on attending that.
Is it back in mind?
I think this was in, this is in.
Okay, okay.
We're probably looking, we met there before Panther Springs Church.
And you talked him tonight about that, just to make sure that it was good to ask him.
The reason I ask is if, you know, we're, we're coming to, I know the wind carries plans to present us that fifty percent design. And we talked about it before, that I think if, if we are going to incorporate or want to hear from those groups, then we need to do that and be ready sooner than later, and not just have them on the sideline if we indeed do intend to listen to what they might say.
I'm hesitant to bring this up prior, prior to speaking with him, uh, because I don't wanna get the cart before the horse. But, um, uh, if he's here today, I wanna speak with, but I, but I think, uh, I'd like to bring Ventress Norfolk into this discussion. And, um, as there are different groups, I'm, I'm wondering if that might be a person to maybe bring them together. I wanna, I wanna speak with him, but I, I'm stammering around because I haven't talked to him yet, and I don't wanna do him the disservice of telling everybody what, what I'm thinking of prior to actually speaking with Ventress, but, um, so give me some slack here, will you?
However you want, I'm just asking for the end product, how do you get there?
I know, I know, I know what you're asking.
I, I think, and I would, I would echo a little bit of what Kay's saying, but with the understanding of this, that, that Chris Camps can bring something that shows fifty percent, but that might not necessarily be what the desires of this board is.
Right, I, I, I think we want the fifty percent thing, but it might, it needs to be the fifty percent that we're comfortable with.
Right.
With the one thing, so.
Right, and, and going back, nothing, nothing gets Ventress, but Ventress doesn't have any ties, he does now, but in the history of Marston College, he doesn't have any ties to, to that part either.
Again, I, I'll start stammering here, but I'm not, I'm, I'm thinking in, in terms of.
Are you talking about a mediate, mediator?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about a kind of committee head.
Okay.
So.
Two, two of those, two of those groups you're, you're talking about will work good together. I don't know about the third.
Well, that, that's, that's for them to, I've, I've spoken with groups, I, I've, I've, I've been busy in that area of.
Of course, two of them probably got about the same players.
Uh, Ken, um, I think, I think Gary's pretty good at the little soft shoe dance, don't you? Probably shuffle there pretty well.
My soft shoes about like pleats on concrete.
Let's, let's talk about the, the ordinance changes, any, any concerns about either the alcohol or the sidewalk?
Oh, I'd like to talk about the alcohol.
Sure.
Okay, first. And, um, just had a couple of questions. The, uh, spell me out, the hours on Sunday, so that this will be able to be served on Sunday, the beer in the microbreweries and other places, just not between the three AM and ten AM. Correct. So that, that coincides with the alcohol. And then the fence outside, I think it was forty-one inches tall, but it doesn't have to be opaque. Is that correct? It can be planters and stuff which you can see through in other words.
It has to control access.
Control, no, no way to get in, but you can see through it. The basis for the forty-six, we reduced it from seven, it's reducing from seventy-five to forty, is that a state? Is that alcohol, or I didn't know how much.
That, that's what state has.
Yes, yes, yeah, I agree with you last time.
Then, uh, the, uh, the food purchase is not required for which permits? And those are the ones that, like, the microbrewery is not required to sell beer? I mean, sell, sell, uh, food, correct? On, 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 and then the, um, limited service restaurant is not required? Can you purchase a beer in a limited service restaurant and not buy food?
The, they still have to serve.
They still have to serve if they're buying.
Just the less than fifty percent of their total revenues.
And, and therefore I want to define kitchen, because in one of them it says they have to have a, you know, like a catering and industrial kitchen. So for the limited restaurant, does the definition of kitchen, is that the same? Because, but it doesn't mention kitchen.
Right, it's not listed in there, I think it's just.
Does the health department set up standards as far as kitchen, kitchen-wise?
They would have to respect that.
I'm talking about, on what has to be to call it a kitchen, not a hot plate and a George Foreman grill.
That's a good point.
And they do, you know, if you've got a kitchen, well, they have to come in and, and approve it ahead of time.
Yes, yes.
The reason I ask is.
Perfect.
I was, I told Tommy after this passed, I talked to him last week, and I said, you know, that next weekend after, because I did some, uh, I was in Knoxville, and my son recommended I go down and, and, I did some enlightening visitation. Non-inviting enlightening.
She did his soft shoe that day.
But I went into a place called The Casual Pipe there in Farragut, and there's another one on Paper Mill, there's several others. And the lady, I, I said, you know, told her why I was asking so many questions and what we were considering and so forth. They did not have a kitchen. They bring the food trucks in, and they park them at the back, they bring the food in. But because of the demand and interest of their patrons, they're gonna put a kitchen in and start serving food. So therefore, if something like The Casual Pipe were to apply here, they would not qualify because they cannot serve food, I mean, they, they don't have food to serve. And the only one that's listed so far that doesn't have to serve food is the microbrewery, is the way I read it. And maybe the nonprofit clubs, I didn't see anywhere in there, like, in that nonprofit, a dealt with VFW and those others there. So I, I think that's a question, and they haven't been required to sell food in the nonprofit, VFW and Foreign Legion and something like that, so. So The Casual Pipe couldn't locate here then, is that correct?
Well, I wonder would they make the definition of a limited service restaurant?
Not if they don't even have a rest, don't have a kitchen at all.
And it just says gross revenue food sales of less than fifty percent.
Oh, they have, they even have peanuts on there.
Food available. Then, I mean, I, I guess at this point, then, no, I don't, I don't know how they would, how they would qualify.
So if they're considering putting a, a restaurant in in Farragut, then if they were to apply here, we would say, you would need to go.
Got a restaurant kitchen in rather prepared food.
So, um.
And I think that's good. That's what you know.
You got Farragut standards, you got Marston standards, do you know where you wanna go?
True, but I'm saying, but according to Marston standards, they would have to meet our qualifications.
Right, sure.
That's all I'm asking.
And that's where the control lies, you, here's the standard, you either qualify or get out.
Okay, on the special events, uh, occasions there, it says, it lists in a farmer's market downtown, that's a, that's a, and others as approved. I was wondering, um, what are the qualifications, is that an individual coming before the planning commission or the city administrator to be approved?
Beer board.
Beer board, so, and there would be.
So Officer Billy would present that to us, just like he does a beer permit.
It's that they'd like to do at this location, with these conditions, here's what they would talk about, you know, controlling the perimeter, parking, all the other things you might want to see, they would have in their application, and y'all review and consider whether it's appropriate.
What are the standards now for special event as far as, uh, police, traffic control, what is?
Larry, you all developed that, there are standards for, for police protection, insurance, coverage. Several things are outlined, but how, how did you record much on, on some of those things?
Basically, the, it's, the, as far as police, it's requested by the permit fee, I guess. Uh, when they come in, and, and, and we furnish, if I remember correctly, two officers. And anything above that, they have to reimburse the city for, if I remember right.
So they request police, it's not us requesting?
No, well, we, we reviewed the application, they request, we review. If we think they need additional walkades or police or whatever, then that's communicated back to that person or group.
Is that area contained, I mean, like, if they have a permitted farmer's market, they've got to stay at farmer's market, is that correct?
It'd be a defined area that they would have to stay in.
Right.
I gather this sounds a lot like we do the five K races, for example. Uh, the city will provide X number, if you want more, you pay. But if alcohol's involved, could we be in a position to say, well, we think you need more, and we're gonna provide you four, and you're paying for two? Like, we could require them to.
Sure.
Carry more security.
I think that would be, you know, it'd be the city's decision to, to, to require more officers there, so.
Yeah, if, if they decided to be, and, and enlarge their square footage or something, that they would.
Well, for example, with the five Ks, if they go with predetermined routes, we kinda know what takes to control the intersection. If they wanna design their own, then we say, this is how many officers it's gonna take, and that's what you're gonna have to have. So we already have that, kind of think it'll be just based on their location and their, the specifics. We try to give them some templates for some that are easy to do, to walk in and say, if you wanna do one quick and easy, here's where we got laid out, here's a good route, here's what it's gonna take.
Right, and that's the goal in this application process, to, for those areas of farmer's market and that sort of thing, have diagrams where those activities can take place.
But if they, if they reserve, Larry, say they reserve farmer's market for a special event, is that that whole property or just the area right there under the shelter?
Well, it can, that's not been decided yet, it could be either and or, and, and be, um, that's not been decided yet, so.
Would be marked off.
They'd be marked off, they, whatever they do, they would have to have limited access where controlled access, where there'd be one or two entry points with, uh, either police officers or someone, you know, where you get banned or something, where you're allowed to purchase alcohol after IDs are checked. So it has to be controlled access one way or the other, it can't be just open.
But every single one of these special occasion permits comes before the beer boards are reviewed by you all before it's issued. So nothing's automatic.
Right.
And so in that, at the end of your, um, PowerPoint that you sent us, you said summing and application, three things to come in, and they're still being worked out. What we're doing is the policy, the original, the ordinance there. So, uh, and that's where, as I asked before, the insurance requirement comes in that too. And then, um.
What, is, is it a million dollar policy that Parks and Rec has now for their special events?
I think that's right.
Would this fall under the same thing, or same?
We, probably so, but we'd have to review it just to make sure.
But right now, we had this discussion when we had, like, the Alex Walk. They have their own coverage that lists us as additional insured when they have their memory walking permit right there. So that's the kinda thing, they would have to have their coverage too, on top of ours.
There, it says that you, on the one about the political candidate, it could be a political committee that can apply. But would that also, could an individual candidate apply to have a special event that would allow the serving of beer?
I think you're scratching that.
Right, I think we're just going based on the political org, a political campaign committee as defined in the TCA or a political party as defined in the TCA.
So I can't have dollar beer that as a campaign strategy?
Which page is that on?
Page two, the definitions of.
I've seen that, I've seen that at Robert Spindler for over years.
Okay, so what, what.
It wasn't beer.
No, we're, it's just, we're saying that the political organization.
About any problems they have.
That you have to, either a political campaign committee or a political party.
Okay, and that's why I'm saying, so that then totally eliminates this individual.
It could be just, yeah, just somebody who says, hey, I'm running for.
Let them make their stakes.
What about then, could a political, uh, campaign organization then reserve city hall and serve alcohol here?
It's not in one of those approved locations.
I would hope not, that's why I made it out.
But it's just like, they could come to you and ask that, and the beer board can make a determination.
Yeah.
And you can always say no.
But there's not gonna be a list of sites where it's available, it's made available to them for public events?
The, the ones that we're gonna try and set down the standards for are the ones that are listed, so that's the farmer's market, what we say.
But it's not available to anybody without a permit.
That's right.
Yeah.
But we're trying to, if you wanna do it in those locations, here's what we think it takes in general.
Uh, I think maybe going back to the kitchen, we may need to define kitchens somewhere, and it may be in your glossary at the beginning already, I'm not sure. There, and then there's one, then, in, I'm talking about fees, so your fee is determined by the amount of food and beer that you sell. That depends on what I pay for my permit, did I understand that correctly?
No.
No, okay, what is it?
The state limits what it can charge it.
It's two-fifty.
Two-fifty.
That's in TCA.
Okay, I'll list today.
Or there's something there that it's, um, not so much percentage, but X number of meals you serve per week. Forgot what section that's.
Yes, it is.
I got a little cross-eyed, but I got to that part.
That's a definition of restaurant.
That can serve four days.
Yes, if you're gonna get a permit as a restaurant, if it's served at least one meal per day, at least four days per week.
And then, but then if you're in a hotel, your hotel can be considered your primary business and not the, not the restaurant. So like, can I go into the restaurant, but I still cannot go in the restaurant and order a beer without food? Is that correct? I still have, do I have food?
No, they have to sell food.
If you're buying food, you don't necessarily have to buy food. It's just like, you could go to Applebee's today and get a beer and not drink, not buy food.
Same thing.
Mm-hmm.
I always thought that we were requiring them, we're gonna make them buy food in that restaurant.
That's just on the coupons.
I think, I think one thing that we're missing here, though, is, is the idea, and Tony, you brought it up in the presentation, is that this gives us good control.
Total control.
You know, that, that outside of these areas, they have to come and ask us if they can do this. We can, we can, uh, control it, I feel like better with this new rules than we can with the old rules.
Well, it's one set of rules for everything, is what it is.
And there's still a cap on the number of beer permits, I, I'd forgotten we even had a cap on, but we do.
It's based on how...
The non-profits are the ones that's gonna benefit most.
It is, and they'll be the ones that can control.
We're, we're close to a hundred and fifty.
And the limit does not include special occasion permits, so, but, what, what did we say the last time we checked, we're at like seventy, eighty? Something like that.
Here's a section, didn't change much, but it was talking about the type of dress that can be worn in these establishments, so does that, that applies to servers that we did, it was pretty well covered before, 'cause you didn't change it. And it took out drive-through, one section, I was wondering why they took out the drive-through?
That was done, we were discussing with Walmart, um, how they're gonna have, and I think Food City might be getting there too, where you can order your groceries online, and they have a very strict policy in regards to, I know we've got copies of it, um, if you can order purchasing beer, and, you know, and so, um, just to get rid of any, I guess, vagueness about whether or not that's considered a drive-through, we struck that. Um, but it does have, at least within Walmart, I haven't seen Food Cities, but, you know, you've gotta be carded when you arrive. I mean, they, they don't just come out and hand you a beer and take your work, 'cause you ordered online, and said you were over twenty-one, so. Um, but just so that there wasn't any question that that was an actual drive-through service.
Do they, Lauren, do they have a amount of purchase other than the alcohol, as far as their delivery stuff?
Do they have what?
So you have to buy, you just can't call Food City and order beer, there has to be groceries involved? Is there any kind of minimum purchase or something on...
I don't, that would be on Walmart's side.
Yeah, that would be up to Walmart's policy.
She said she had Food Cities or something, I just...
But now you can't, you can't order while you've got it right now, you can't get any beer through the drive-through.
I mean, we...
Is that correct?
It wouldn't be technically considered a drive, the way I, I look at it, I don't, I don't think that what Walmart and Food City are doing is technically a drive-through. You're not driving through and placing an order for, you know, you're not driving through Moe's and saying, hey, get me a burrito and get me a beer, um, but...
I could see that in some places.
Right, right.
And that's probably not good, and so, I, I think you...
You know, the old SunTrust building up there on the corner of Wilder, where you cut up to go to Trinity Church, they've got a drive-through.
Yeah, they would love to have.
Well, now, this has been taken out, so it, it does, it's not addressed in the new ordinance at all.
We have struck the language that said that you are not permitted to, um, so I guess technically we would be saying, yes, sure, you could. A business could come to us and say, hey, we wanna...
Well, you know, what was the milk store you used to be able to drive through? Okay, you know, you drive through, and in North Carolina, I think you can drive through and get your beer too.
Well, that, they have that drugstore system, I mean, that should be very easy to get your...
Lauren, I got a legal question, responsibility of selling to underage individuals would be on whoever has the event, is that correct?
Yes.
Not the city marshal?
Permit holder.
Permit holder, okay.
They would be the ones who would be cited, if they saw it to...
Who's the responsibility of monitoring those special events as far as cardholders and stuff, though?
I think that would be on the, I mean, that would be on the permit holder, that would be part of that whole application for the special permit, you know, that you've gotta provide security, you've gotta provide officers, you know, who's gonna check IDs, things like that.
Whoever sells it would be responsible.
Do you have to have a licensed bartender for, for an event like that, a special event, right?
For a mixed drink, mixed drink.
Does a mixed drink, you wouldn't put beer?
Not for the beer, I don't play.
But I think those who write, who, who insure events where alcohol's served, they won't insure you if you don't have a licensed bartender, I think you're right.
Or if you're at least, what, eighteen or twenty-one to serve, I mean, I think there's gonna be, yeah.
You can't get special event insurance unless you have that.
Back on the drive-through, do we need to put that in here, or is there a conservative, or separate it from, I think it's called curbside pickup, Kmart, Vida?
I just did a quick search of Food City, and they've got both the curbside pickup and the, in some locations, working on delivery to your door. So those are two services you may want to think about, when you're crafting that, that piece, because that's, that's becoming more and more a thing with you order online and have it delivered.
But that's different than driving up and getting your prescription of whatever, and a six-pack of beer, through the, through the drive-through.
Give me a bottle of OxyContin on a six-pack.
Can't you open that beer while you're in there?
You can get OxyContin delivered to you.
Um, Dennis is...
My custodian, the town board used to deliver beer and stuff.
So, let me ask you, Kay, are you saying that we might want to consider, and tonight, about whether or not to have curbside pickup or home delivery of any alcoholic beverages?
No, I'm saying that, a lot, word is, so is Tony saying that you, does not, but it does not prevent curbside pickup or home delivery of grocery stuff and so, but you cannot just drive up and get a six-pack.
Or as a, as a beer board, we can put that requirement on them, get them a permit.
That's right.
Can you do it there if you don't have it in the ordinance? I just think, you know, Dennis is pointing out, that's a bank with a drive-through, that's been converted into a convenience store.
They would love to open that back up, I'm sure.
Oh, they'd open that.
The drive-through, would you?
Yes, you can pick up cigarettes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I don't know what, I mean, I don't know...
Well, it's just a matter of adding the language that curbside sales are not permitted.
Or curbside sales, so basically put that back in, prohibit them from making or allowing sale beer directly to the occupants of a vehicle. Well, I think you need to take that out, through drive-through windows, except that curbside pickup, online ordering is permitted.
Well, I see grocery stores, Food City, make provisions for when people buy beer at the checkout counter, where there has to be something, before they ring it up, they punch a button, and, and an older person comes, or supervisor who is of age comes and pushes the button, scan the beer, and then they leave, and the person resumes. Grocery stores are very much aware of, of the beer permits and selling alcohol at, at too young an age, and, and it's a, uh, I, I don't think it'd be difficult at all to just say, curbside pickup is not permitted.
What you're talking about is if a cashier is underage.
If a cashier is underage.
I, I think the whole idea here is, is the continuity of the state and the, and the beer board. So, can you right now, under, under Food City's rules, can you order your groceries, and included in that groceries would be a bottle of wine?
Yes.
You can, and they deliver it to your car, and they...
They mark the bag alcohol, so they have to check to make sure that you're legal age before they will let you buy that.
Then what we want to do is be, be the same.
And I agree with that part, I'm just saying, I just don't want you to be able to drive through out of SunTrust Bank and get a six-pack, while you're in your vehicle.
Well, that would be difficult for the owner to check the age, because they, uh, Food City looks at everybody's driver's license before they'll sell them a beer. Everybody, it would be difficult to drive in that thing, but, you know.
Maybe, and I'm not, I'm not looking to create a problem, I'm just ask, hoping to ask the question before it becomes one.
I think there are places in the state of Tennessee that you can drive by a convenience store, just like you could go in and pick up anything, and you could buy beer, and they check your ID, and they hand it out to you.
The only problem, they, they have to, they have to make sure it's your twenty-one, or whatever the state...
And they also make sure it's not an open, you know, container.
Not open when you hand it to them.
That's true.
Those are my questions, thank you.
That's all?
No, I have another stat. On the sidewalk, I'm, I'm reading through that, you know, I mentioned curb cuts before, and I don't think that applies to this particular ordinance, but I do believe that we need to have something addressed, Tony, in planning, that addresses either abandoned or non-utilized, uh, curb cuts when a property's developed, like at Home Trust Bank or St. Luke's, because, and, and decide whose responsibility that is, that because of the way your building is built, and the way your landscaping is, you're not gonna use this, and it's an eyesore.
But isn't that a, the one in front of St. Luke's up there, and I, I've noticed it more since you mentioned it, I've noticed it before. But isn't that state specified as far as...
Morris Town, there's a special situation, we can, can issue driveway permits on state roads, falls of a longstanding agreement, 'cause that many, many, many years, but, but Lauren, you did some work on, on this issue.
I think what the issue's gonna be, okay, so like, like the Home Trust Bank, you know, when they purchase the property, they're obviously the ones who have come to you all to, or come to planning, to get approval, to have that driveway cut, have that curb cut. So then now, that's the property that they own, I don't know how we would be able to go back on and say, okay, well, just because your business is now gone, we're gonna build that curb back, if they've received approval to have that be cut out. Um, like with Home Trust Bank, I guess right now, I don't know if it's been sold, that little one there has, off Main Street, has been sold, but if they still own the property, and that they're looking to sell the property to, you know, potential future buyer, why would we, or how could we even put the curb back and then make that new buyer?
No, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about the big building, where when they built it, they don't even use it. You know, it's, it's, they have their two entrances here, and between the two entrances, there's a, a street used to be there, a driveway to the old house that was there. So when they built their building, they built their own entrance, and, and, and incoming and outgoing places, and then they have, we have the sidewalk. But they put a sidewalk over the old non-used driveway, and it's just cut out to the street, it's nuts. I wouldn't think that would apply at all to the one on the corner.
It would be in the development, just like requiring a sidewalk, I mean, we require sidewalks now. And we can require that curb to be in developing, but if it's already, I mean, if it's not, if it's past the developing stage, we don't, we don't require a sidewalk if it just changes ownership, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it would, it would follow the same guidelines as, as the sidewalk.
If we, we have a site plan review, then we can catch it and address it. If it's something that just is sold, we probably can't with existing regulations.
And the place that Kay is talking about, when they built that building, is where that should have been taken care of. I mean, you can't hardly go back and say, well, you gotta fix this curb now, you know.
But I think that's something that we want to put in going forward, that we definitely do, and maybe we look at some of these things that we might be able to do, you know, to clean some of these areas up, it's, it's just continuity, I mean, Morris Boulevard's been paved, you drive down through there, we put in the sidewalk down to Food City, et cetera, and then you come in front of St. Luke's, it's a very nice building, and you've got this, you know, dip that's out there, so, yes, it doesn't fit here.
Or St. Luke's.
Across from Sunoco.
Between East High School and, uh...
The VA building.
You know, VA A building is, it's right next door to VA.
Oh, the VA building.
It's there for old...
This is Morris Boulevard.
Triangle, Pacific used to be, modern and old street.
Okay, okay, yeah. You know, speaking of Morris Boulevard, I want to compliment the people when they paved that. That was about as smooth an operation as I have ever seen, they need to be complimented on how they did that.
You're second to line behind Gwen, she's already said...
Oh, has she? Gwen and I think a lot alike on stuff.
The people that complain, I think you said there was something...
I like a pretty highway.
I don't know.
They don't understand, you can't pave if something's already curbed and gutted, you know, without...
I tell you, I, I, I thought they did a fantastic timing job, the, the, it was, I thought they did, be complimented.
And I don't know where this city, or, or who, after our last meeting, they helped clean up some more curbs too. I don't know, was it contractor, or our, uh, public works department, but somebody...
Little boat.
Okay.
They did a little persuading and a little, little elbow.
Okay, it, it, it did help, because up on the east end towards Industrial Park, it had a difference, yeah.
Let, let me bring this one up quick before we get trounced on time. Do you all understand that the two, the solid waste board appointments, one is a council nomination and vote, and the other one is a, is a, is an affirmation of a recommendation from the city administrator. That's, and, I didn't know if there's any confusion on that, or you understand it, John Hofer is, is our council appointee that we made before. He's agreed to go back on, and I think he's considered to have been a pretty solid member in that, so we need a nomination and a, a vote there. And then, uh, Tony is, uh, appoint somebody from the council, mayor or council, and Bob has served in that role, and Bob, you, you will continue in that.
One thing I mentioned about John Hofer, John's an engineer, licensed professional graduate engineer, he, he has a big asset, 'cause that's on the board.
I just want to make sure we understood, those were two separate actions.
Seeing motion to approve both of those.
Yes, those are council votes on both of those, so.
I just want to go back to some...
How would you do Bob's, though, with Tony had to make a recommendation?
Tony's making, uh, is, is making a, a recommendation, it's just a motion to his recommend, accept his recommendation.
That's solid waste board turning around when Leroy here was pointed on it.
Leroy, I thought he was in world war two.
Somebody told me, he worried about all the work Tony would go have to do, I said, Tony won't have to do anything, ask who's gonna do the work.
And he does it eff- effortlessly.
Okay, I, I, I interrupted your sidewalk deal there, but I just want to make sure we got that, I want to make sure there wasn't any confusion on that.
I think that's good. Uh, page five on the sidewalk, it talks about, uh, that the property owner is supposed to keep the sidewalk clean. I wondered, and it talked about snow removal, et cetera, could clean also involve weeds and grass growing in the sidewalk? And the definition of cleaning?
Uh, I think it does.
Stewardship, okay, and then the other...
You've got a long sidewalk in front of your house.
I, and I, listen, I go along with the corner and then cover up nights sometimes to clean up in front of my two neighbors. Uh, haven't done it in a while. Uh, the mailboxes on hedges and trees that can't, and years ago, in the nineties, we, we go through this, where you can't build these monument mailboxes at the curb, but they're prop, they're popping up again. And I think down at Jose's or Holstens or somewhere, there's one down there too. Where it's right at the edge, if, if we're talking about line of sight for signs, I wonder if we should also think about line of sight for a, you know what I'm talking about, where they build a big brick with stone mailboxes. You have any thoughts on that one, Tony?
Uh, yeah, if it's a, a line of sight concern, the, the planning site review ought to look at that, I can remind the guys.
How would they know unless...
The inspector would have to go out there, they'd have to catch it when they're doing, like a footer inspector role, you know, find it for, for the, for the building.
So that's something that would already catch that, it would just be a matter of, it's not something we have to write into the...
What about the, what about the mailboxes that are in five gallon buckets full of concrete?
Well, we can move those.
You can see around those.
Well, I mean, I guess what you need to do is make sure people understand that putting a, a monument mailbox is the same as putting a sign up. Because when we put that sign up down on Bat, at, uh, Winbridge, I mean, they came out two or three times and looked at it and said, okay, you can go on to the next deal. So if you do a mailbox, you ought to have to do the same thing.
I don't think we're doing that either, I think, and, and it's, it's just like the sign that had to be moved at Massingill Springs, that was after the fact. And I think we have some mailboxes going up on the curb that, um...
Well, we're not the size of Massingill Springs.
No, but it's still about two feet, and it depends on, can I see back here, or can I see up here?
What about the sign, the, the, how did they fix it?
They dropped it, they, they dug up the footer and dropped it down to where it was lying.
I, I'd rather have it say, hey, this is a problem, come fix it, instead of...
Well, I think...
That's just me, I, I, I'd leave it alone.
Well, I think it's a discussion that, like you're talking about the others, that needs to be had, uh, while you're in the development stage, or some kind of statement in there. It's much easier to get, get the right permission on something like that than to get forgiveness.
Say that, I've never heard it before.
You've never heard getting forgiveness, ah, it's all the time.
I'm just yanking you, Kay, 'cause it's so easy to do. Well, we, we, I agree with Kay in the fact that we don't want to start everybody putting the monument mailboxes out on, on, on the edge of the.
We don't want it to be a competition about who can put up the grandest mailbox.
If it's on a corner or something, I can see a, or it would be a problem as far as line of sight, if it's on a corner, but.
I was just saying, sometimes you get too much language and it's only, it's, and it all it does is create a roadmap for the next person to get around that language, and then you've got, you, you have to keep rewriting the language. If it's just blocks of view, let's get the city, the authorities, and, hey, you're blocking the view, you're gonna have to move this.
Sterling Vaughn lives on the corner of Economy and Walters Drive. In nineteen ninety-six, all hell came down, 'cause me next to him built a monument mailbox. It was a big deal then, and, uh.
And how did it turn out?
I think if you go by there, I believe he did move it back.
Were there lives lost in the process?
He eventually, later on, he died, he did.
One fatality.
Real quick, ten o'clock tomorrow, groundbreaking, who's coming, who's not?
I'm gonna try that. I'll be there. At the fire hall, right? It's only five shows.
If you watch your hand on the shoulder. And tomorrow, tomorrow, ten o'clock.
You gonna be late, Stan, so you gonna bring your own show?
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to turn any dirt.